Where is Mr. Burke? Is he in the room? Mr. Burke, will you please stand up? Mr. Burke, I wasn't able to make your, the small ceremony for you, but I'll tell you what, that's miniscule to the work you've provided for our citizens here in Glendale and the work you've led for our staff in Glendale. You've done an extraordinary job. You did some work for another municipality, and I'm sure they're still celebrating what you've done. But thank you so much for always working with me, being respectful, timely, and professional. I appreciate you. And I'm so glad. Thank you to your spouse, your wife, for allowing you to be loaned to us, and we appreciate you. I appreciate you, and thank you so much for making our parks better and meeting with our constituents. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burke, we have benefited from having your expertise from the city of Phoenix and moving over here to the city of Glendale. You've done a tremendous job with the parks and acquiring the funding to touch all parks. And I think the citizens of Glendale are very appreciative of your efforts. I know that this council is as well. We enjoy you. Much luck, much health, and happiness as you enter into retirement. I understand you like to travel. May you travel to every canyon that you would like to go visit, and just be careful and don't fall. Thank you for everything you have done for the city. It is much appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burke, thank you for all you have done over the last few years since you've been here in the city of Glendale. I know from my personal experiences I've worked with you, you've been very responsive to following up with concerns I've had. I know that you've put together a master plan for our parks. It's going to take some time. I know our parks need still a lot of work, and you've started that process to really make a difference. And especially this past year, as we talked about, different amenities such as the splash pads in different areas, and they put one in our district. And you were very responsive to the citizens. You were there when we called meetings because they had concerns about it, and I appreciate your involvement in all that you do. And I wish you luck in your retirement. I know you plan to do a lot of traveling and enjoy some of those cold and maybe some warm spots in the world, and have a great time. Enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Mr. Hugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, you were the best. You did a fantastic job. You were the right guy at the right time. What I appreciated, you'd want to know what I wanted at one of my city parks, and I'd go, Jim, I don't know. You're the expert. Tell me what we need. And that worked out great, it was a great working relationship. And I don't know if the other council members know it, but you always did a better job in Cactus District than any of theirs. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Did he mean he's doing a better job in the Cactus District than the other districts, or? I'm just kidding, Jim. Thank you for your service to our city. I know, I don't know how it was in Phoenix. I know that we had high expectations here, and we had a lot of things that we wanted to get done. And I mean, we're well on our way. We're never going to be finished, obviously. It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing investment in our, in our parks and our community to make it a better place for our residents to live. But I understand the amount of pressure you were under when you came here, and we were focusing a big investment and a big focus on improving our parks. So thank you for putting up with us, and thank you for delivering. And good luck to you in your retirement.
Any other comments? Mr. Burke, my comments are not to you. They're to your wife. You don't have to listen to the stories anymore. Now you actually get to enjoy your retirement. So thank you for sharing him. I know, and every council member up here knows how difficult it is doing our job and what the spouses have to put up with. And so thank you for allowing him to serve the city of Glendale. I think he's done a great job with, with the limits that he was under. I wish that we had the funds to do everything that we want to do, and eventually, maybe someday we'll get there. But I think he's done a fantastic, fantastic job. So again, thank you for your support, for your husband, allowing him to serve our citizens of Glendale. So no other comments? Okay, very good. Thank you. Ms. Barr, Jim, if you'd like to go home, you can go. Take your wife, too. Okay, Ms. Barr, can you introduce item number two?
Five-year forecast of the major funds.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here to do the staff report for item number two will be led by Levi Gibson, our Director of Budget and Finance, and he'll be assisted by Amy Lindsay, our Assistant Director of Budget and Finance, and also, of course, Assistant City Manager Vicki Rios.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Before we begin today, I would like to introduce Jonathan Hill, who recently was promoted to our Budget Administrator position. We're giving him a little bit of break today because he started that position on Monday. So we're going to do the forecast this morning, this afternoon, and get him involved in the process, but wanted to introduce him to you as he'll be part of our budget team going forward. With that, our agenda for today is we will be giving a budget overview, overview for the fiscal 24-25 budget year. We'll talk about the property tax levy. The second portion of our presentation is we'll focus on the five-year financial forecast for the general fund, the special revenue funds, and our enterprise funds. This is our budget calendar for the upcoming 24-25 budget year. As you can see, we have six workshops planned from December 12th today, when we'll begin our budget overview, five-year forecast of revenues and expenditures. Our second workshop will be on February 6th, which will be capital improvement plan. We'll have another session on March 5th for our capital improvement plan, followed by two all-day work, work sessions for the operating budget for each of the departments within the city. That will be on April 2nd and April 4th, followed by our final budget workshop for fiscal year '25 on April 16th. The last three meetings in the calendar are highlighted. These are the items in the budget calendar that have legally required deadlines. We schedule our calendar so the legally required deadlines are much earlier than what is required by law. This allows for flexibility in the calendar if needed. Our tentative budget adoption is scheduled on May 14th, 2024. The maximum expenditure limitation is set upon adoption of the tentative budget. Legal requirement for tentative budget adoption is on or before the third Monday in July of each fiscal year. The final budget adoption and discussion of the property tax levy is scheduled for June 11th, 2024. The legal requirement for the final budget adoption is the first Monday in August, with at least 14 days between the adoption of the final budget and the adoption of the tax levy. The adoption of the property tax levy is scheduled for June 25th, 2024. The legal requirement for the final tax levy is to be adopted by the third Monday in August. There are additional requirements for publications that are built into our schedule as well. The following slide is a slide that you guys have seen before. This represents our budget process. Internally with staff, I kind of refer this to as painting the, the bridge, where, where we finish, we start right over again. This today represents the preparation of our five-year financial forecasts. After that, we develop the base operating budget requests for each of the departments within the city. We then work on our, and develop and balance our CIP. We present our draft budget to City Council. City Council adopts the final budget, and then staff prepares our budget book. And then we begin the process all over again. So it's almost a year-round process. This is another slide that you've seen before. It represents the budget components that we will look at throughout the budget process. Generally, the discussion today will be focused on the budget process for the general fund. We want to talk about revenues. The two major operating revenues for us are sales tax and state shared revenue. And within budget and finance, we continue to monitor all our revenues closely, especially our city sales tax and our state shared revenue. Our operating portion of the budget represents the day-to-day costs, such as police and fire operations, personnel, personnel costs, utilities, and our neighborhood programs. Our capital improvement portion of the budget includes improvements to city streets, water and sewer lines, parks, and city facilities. These are items that are non-routine in nature and generally cost more than $50,000 and have a useful life of at least five years. The debt service portion of our budget represents the principal and interest on the city's outstanding debt. We have different types of debt service, and those include general obligation bonds, which are serviced with our secondary property taxes, our HERF bonds, which are serviced with HERF funds, excise tax bonds, which are serviced by general fund excise tax, as well as transportation debt, which can be serviced by our transportation sales tax funds. And additionally, we have water and sewer debt, which is serviced by the water and service sewer utility. Again, this is a slide that you have seen previously, and this basically represents teeter totter or a scale that represents the revenues and the expenditures for the city as a whole. And as you can see, under the expenditure side, we have operating, our capital improvement plan, our debt service, and our contingency. And under the revenue side, we have our revenues plus our fund balance. And the, the teeter totter is slightly unlevel, but it's because we tend to be super conservative in how we forecast, and we would like to build fund balance and have our revenues slightly exceed our expenditures. So one of the city council's financial policies is related to the property tax. And to ensure the ongoing general fund stability, the primary property tax levy will be evaluated each year to determine where it should be set. Again, this is another slide that you may remember from previous presentations, but it represents the average property tax split for Glendale city residents. The property tax is divided primarily 62% in that red ball to schools. The city of Glendale's primary property tax represents about 4% of the overall bill. The gray ball represents those voter-approved tax related to debt service, and that's our secondary property tax. The county represents about 13% of the overall tax bill, and then any special districts represent 7% of the bill. So this is a property tax bill example within the city of Glendale on a home that is valued under the full cash value of $499,000. Glendale's primary and secondary tax rates are listed in red in this example. The combined rate, which is the primary and secondary, is $1.6701 in 2022, and decreases to $1.5626 in 2023. So that $1.5626 represents the current year rate. And as you can see, Glendale's total of the 2022 tax bill is approximately $598.76, and the total for the 2023 tax bill is $588.25. The total decrease in Glendale's portion of the tax bill from 2022 to 2023 is $10.51. And the overall increase, as you can see, between '22 and '23, there was an overall increase, is related to those other categories: schools, the county, and the special districts. And it can be due to increased property value, increased rates set by those other taxing jurisdictions, or a combination of both. This is a simple example to demonstrate a 2% increase to the primary levy. It does not assume any new construction or an increase in assessed valuation for property values. Primary levy is the amount of revenue collected per the adopted property tax rate. And council has the option of increasing the primary tax levy by a maximum percent of 2% annually, which is the allowed legal limit for an increase. So this example uses the fiscal year 2023 adopted property tax levy for both primary and secondary property tax, implies a 2% increase to the primary levy only. As you can see, the amount of general fund revenues generated by the 2% increase would be approximately $131,000, $131,061. This, and with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Rios.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I was just going to cover this slide really quickly. This kind of shows you the cumulative effect of the years that the council has elected not to take advantage of the 2% maximum increase. So as Levi showed on the previous slide, it's $131,000 this year, but it hasn't been raised for nine years, or this would be the ninth year without using that 2% maximum. The cumulative impact of that is just around $1 million a year. And then if you add up over all the nine years that it hasn't been raised, it would have meant about $5 million, actually about $5.5 million to the city that the city has foregone over that period of time by not raising the primary property tax levy. As a reminder, the primary property tax levy can be used for any expense in the city and goes into the general fund for our services like police, fire, and the like. One reason why I wanted to mention this specifically is we're going to ask in a few minutes for the consensus of the council to stick with what you've been doing. We're going to show you a forecast, and we have assumed, again, that the council would not want to increase the primary levy, so we've built that into the forecast that way, not doing the 2%. But I just want to mention that this may not be sustainable over the long term. It's something that council's going to have to consider. We say we are considering it every year, but with other pressures on the general fund in particular, and some of the things that have happened particularly with the residential rental tax being, you know, removed from the city's ability to tax that, we're seeing pressure on the general fund and its revenue streams. And so over the long run, this, this may, this is really going to have to be taken into consideration, whether we want to do the 2%, and whether actually we could, the council could catch up the entire amount and do all the 2% that were not done in the prior years. And we have done that in the past. In fact, we did it in 2000, I mean, in fiscal year 15, right before we stopped doing them again, and you see that represented here. So we're, we're building it out this way, again, assuming that you do not want to take advantage of that or do not want to increase the primary levy. But it is something that's going to be more of a concern as we move forward into the future.
With that, as Ms. Rios has stated, the primary levy can be used for any general fund expense. There is an allowable 2% increase per year, and as she stated, the cumulative increase is approximately $1.1 million. At this time, we would like to receive council consensus that you'd like to have the primary tax levy remain flat for fiscal year '24-25.
All right. So I'll, I'll start off. I have no interest in raising it. I do want to keep it where we are now. I asked for a consensus. Is there a consensus to leave it where it is now?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our secondary property tax history. This slide shows the secondary property tax amount collected over the past nine years. The amount remains relatively flat and has only increased due to new property being added to the tax roll. The secondary property tax exclusively pays for general obligation bond debt service. And with that, we'd like to have a discussion around the secondary tax levy, to see if council would like to have that levy remain flat as well.
We were distracted by the phone call.
That's okay. So with that, we wanted to receive council consensus on if the secondary property tax levy should also remain flat for the fiscal year '24-25 budget year.
All right. Any discussion?
Just have a comment, if I may, or perhaps it's a question. Regarding the, the actual dollars collected, over the past three to four years, we've added, you know, some 22 million-plus square feet of commercial property. Is that number reflected in here, or are a lot of those not yet online? I would have expected a little bit higher bump in new assessments due to new property than just, we're talking just a million over last year and only 600,000 over the prior year. It seems quite a small compared to the volume that we've had added to our city.
Mayor, Councilmember Melnar, that's a great question. One thing to remember is the property tax calendar. And the way that the county assessor's office operates is they're typically about 18 months behind when something, say, receives a certificate of occupancy to when it makes it on the tax roll. So I would expect the vast majority of the stuff that's captured, say, that's been built and occupied in the last 18 months, to be captured on the upcoming assessment that will be for the current, the, the next fiscal year. So the valuation calendar, or amounts come out from the county assessor's office typically in February.
Okay, thank you. That answers that question. So next year and perhaps the following year, we'll expect a bump in that just due to added new construction. Thank you.
Correct.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to add one thing to that. We did see a pretty big increase last year. So when we look at this, we typically only anticipate somewhere around 1% growth, because that was historically what it was. But last year, we saw about 11% growth in the, in the levy from the new properties being added. So as Levi said, we'll, we'll see more of that happening. But we did see some, and it was about, I think around 11% last year.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm not interested in increasing the secondary property taxes or levy. You can't look at this, this is presented in a vacuum. You have to consider the city's entire revenue picture. And, and we know that sales tax, for instance, continues to increase. So there are mechanisms within the revenue picture for the city that more than compensate for the secondary property tax levy, which is very low, and really contributes very little toward the overall budget of the city. So I'm not interested in raising. Thank you.
Any other question? Question?
Yeah, question. I want to go back for a second, though, on the previous item. The, when you say that we need, we're being cautioned here on not raising the 2%, and that that may not be sustainable going forward in the future, does, does your staff, city managers and his staff, are you guys working on that and preparing? And do you have a date of when we need to start being very cautious on that?
Mayor, members of the council, no. Again, as we prepared this forecast, which you'll see here shortly, we've still assumed that the council's direction would be to keep it flat, and so we've built that into our next five years. It's more what I'm saying is as other things come up, particularly things that may happen at the state legislature, we're going to have to keep that in mind. But right now, our forecast, as you'll see, we can, we're good for the next five years that, that we can see barring, I mean, it's a forecast, so we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know exactly everything that may happen. I'm just saying that as time goes on, it's something that we may have to consider, especially if there's more pressure from the state on our revenues.
Thank you. And that answered my question. It's, it's five years that you are, have some certainty, but you just never know. And then just fast-forwarding a little bit, in those five years, there will be a rental tax reduction. We collected 13 million in '23. In that five years, are you considering that? Yes?
Yes, absolutely. And, and Mr. Gibson will cover that in a moment. But yes, we've absolutely already built in the reduction in residential rental.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And I'm with others that I am not in favor of changing anything now and keeping it flat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Rios, is the 11% increase just based on the, the properties, new property being added to the tax rolls last year reflected in slide on page number nine?
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
No other discussion? I, I myself, I'm not interested in raising this this year. I, I would like to caution, sort of going with what you've already said to the council. We do expect with the economy, with, what the legislature's going to be facing with, potential of maybe losing some more HERF funds next year with the study, with the state shortfall in their budget. Next year, we may have a different scenario. But for this year, I think with, with Vi opening up in approximately 12 months, I, I think that, I think we're good for another year. That's my personal belief. I hope I'm right. Next year might be a different discussion, but you know what, go as long as we can before we have to raise any, any tax whatsoever. So it sounds like we have a consensus to leave them flat where we're at.
Yep, thank you.
Is that correct?
Yeah. With that, I'll turn over the next portion of the presentation to Ms. Amy Lindsay.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Mayor and council, very excited to be here for the first presentation of the 24-25 budget process. I'll be covering the five-year financial forecasts. So, "Long Term Financial Planning" considers economic conditions and future spending as a best practice that provides insight into the city's future financial capacity, ability to provide core services, and achieve financial sustainability. It's a tool that can be used to foresee and prevent future financial challenges and are used when we communicate with our rating agencies. The development of the five-year financial forecast is the first step in the fiscal year '24-25 budget process. As a reminder, the forecasts are a high-level overview and do not represent the budget for fiscal year '24-25, but are one of the tools used to develop a balanced budget that can later be presented to City Council. Five-year financial forecasts are recognized as a best practice by the Government Finance Officers Association and are developed with data collected from several sources around the state of Arizona, including the Arizona Department of Revenue, the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, the Arizona Joint Legislative Budget Committee, the Arizona Department of Transportation, our own City of Glendale historical data, and information we receive from other comparable cities. The five-year forecasts provide the ability to see how decisions made in the current year affect the city in the future. During this presentation, we will highlight the financial trends in the general fund, the special revenue funds, and the enterprise So assumptions for the general fund. In the city sales tax category of the general fund, we have included the reduction of residential rental tax beginning on January 1st, 2025. The city collected 13 million in residential rental taxes in fiscal year '23 across all funds. That includes $7 million in the general fund, $3 million in the transportation sales tax fund, $2 million in the public safety sales tax police fund, and $1 million in the public safety sales tax fire fund. The five-year forecast also assumes conservative growth for fiscal year '25 through '29, including reductions in construction sales tax beginning reductions in construction sales tax beginning in fiscal year '25 and reaching an average trend in fiscal year '29. The average growth in all other sales tax or in all other revenue categories averaged about 2%. We have also considered the addition of revenue for the Vi Resort beginning in fiscal year '25. The state's shared sales tax assumption in the forecast is consistent with the Department of Revenue report.
Mayor, excuse me, I have a question.
Go ahead.
About that previous slide where you say that you have considered the addition of revenue for Vi because, beginning in fiscal year '25. How do you reflect that if we lose 13 million in residential rental tax, but according to the economic study, we're picking up another estimated 32 million? Doesn't that show for 2025 that there will actually be an increase to the general fund and transportation and public safety?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, however, we're very conservative in, so we're going to take the entire amount out for residential rental because that's a known thing, but we're rather conservative in adding revenue for Vi. Part of that is because in that first year, we'll only see a half a year and they're also not opening the entire resort all at once. And and then not all of that $32 million goes into the general fund. I would like to point out also on this slide, while we're saying the loss to the general fund is 7 million, the the public, the two safety sales tax categories also get transferred into the general fund as revenue because we record all of the expenses for police and fire in the general fund. So the net off the general fund for the loss of residential rental is actually 10 million. However, you're correct, we'll add in Vi and so at the end of the day, the general fund is sort of made whole, but we're very conservative. We're not going to add an entire 30 million until we start seeing that revenue come in. There are timing issues. Again, it's only going to be open partially in fiscal year '25 and then a full year in fiscal year '26, I believe. And then, and we just take it very conservatively. We don't want to count our chickens, so to speak, before they they're hatched.
Thank you, Mayor, if I might. I understand your conservatism, but even half of 32 million is 15 million roughly, which would offset the loss of residential rental tax and and perhaps provide a minimal amount of excess. Is that not reflected anywhere in your calculation?
Mayor, members of the council, what I'm saying is, yes, it is. It is reflected in the in the forecast that residential rental will go down, but Vi will, you'll see that we need the revenue from Vi to manage through the loss of the residential rental. That's essentially what is happening.
Okay, if I could follow up with one more. Will this be reflected later on in budget discussions and it is not reflected in this forecast?
No, Mayor, members of the council, it is reflected that way in the forecast.
So you're saying even with the revenue from Vi, we're still going to be 13 million in the hole for residential?
Mayor, members of the council, no, that is not what I'm saying. I'm saying we have reflected both. We have taken out, but we have added back for Vi. And so you'll see it sort of balances each other out.
That's what I thought. So, okay, I'll let it go at this point, but I think the way that you're presenting this is kind of misleading, but thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't going to stop you, but since we're stopped already, on state shared, state shared revenue, state shared sales tax, it's on slide that we're on now, 19. And I've been asking about this for a while because I've been hearing other cities that state revenues are coming. In fact, now it's been in the media widely reported. I think as of right now, somewhere around 400 million shortfall in state revenue. But, excuse me, the last financial, I don't know where we are with state shared revenue if we're starting to see that. I looked at the monthly financial reports. We haven't had one uploaded since April. That was eight months ago. So I don't have any idea where we are. I've asked about this and I don't know what the schedule is for getting those monthly reports, but there's there's nothing uploaded since April of 2023. But with this forecast, are we considering that we can be relatively sure that our state shared revenue and as the mayor said, our HERF revenues might necessarily not come in lower, but they might be, what was the word we used to use, swept into the state budget? Is that what, is that the word they use? But swept into the state budget to fund other state operations? So, I mean, the the economy is a little uncertain right now. So I mean, and I don't, I know you can't forecast uncertainty, but I was trying to look at the, because I knew this was coming today, I just wanted to look and see where we were with state shared revenue, but the most recent report I could find was from April.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchev, I'll try and remember all the questions there. So first, with regard to the monthly report, we are currently working with IT to do some quality control on what was presented. You know, I think it was in September to to generate that monthly report. In the meantime, while that process gets worked out, I've instructed staff to go back the old way to prepare those monthly reports for July, August, September, and October because November and December obviously haven't closed yet. So we'll get those posted out probably in the next couple of weeks so that you can see that. Now, with regard to state shared revenue, we do have a slide coming up here in a little bit that shows what our TPT revenue has done for the last, I think we show five years or six years on there, plus the current year. We do look at state shared revenue in the way of sales tax every month internally. What we've seen is that while the trend of the increase has flattened through October, we still have, we're still collecting about 5% more than we did last year. So the trend has slowed and you will see that in in that upcoming slide where we show state shared tax revenue. One of the items at the state that happened that's led to a little bit of their problem, they have a couple of different issues. One is the flat tax that they implemented. But with regard to state shared revenue, in August or October, the state did a technical correction, they call it. They had a couple of large taxpayers who were reporting under the use tax category instead of the state shared tax category. For the state, they get 100% of the use tax and that revenue is not shared with the cities or towns in Arizona. When the state removed that from the use tax category and put it into the state shared tax category, they lost money. But we gained money because it went from a category we didn't get to a category we did get. And that's one of the the problems at the state was that miscategorization of those funds when it was reported. But we'll get more into the state shared tax revenue as we get into that slide.
To that explanation. So, state shared sales tax is consistent with the report from the Department of Revenue. State shared income tax is based on tax collection two years ago, as Mr. Gibson stated. The state's adoption of the 2.5% flat tax income or income tax rate will result in the reduction of state shared income taxes, which is reflected in the five-year forecast in fiscal year '26. One-time sales tax revenue for mega events is also built into the forecast with an expenditure offset that is equal to the revenue. And the forecast also has an updated repayment schedule from the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority for Camelback Ranch. So this next slide goes through the city sales tax collected over the past five years across all funds. So this is general fund, transportation sales tax funds, and the public safety sales tax funds for both police and fire. We have collected the sales tax, we also have the sales tax collected from July to October of fiscal year '24 reflected in this chart. And as Mr. Gibson said, when we compare the collections from the current fiscal year, so fiscal year '24, to the collections from July through October of fiscal year '23, we are currently trending approximately 5% higher than the same time last year. So expenditure assumptions in the general fund. For the general fund operating expenditure assumptions, we have an average increase of 8% across all categories for fiscal year '25, a 5% increase for fiscal year '26, and a 4% increase for fiscal years '27 through '29. This includes a $9.5 million increase in the salary category, which includes temp pay and overtime, and a $4.3 million increase in benefits and retirement for fiscal year '25. The forecast also reflects increases to risk management, workers' compensation, and shop charges. There is a placeholder for the addition of 13 police officers related to the COPS grant, and the reason this item is a placeholder is the item to accept the grant is on the agenda for this evening's voting meeting. The forecast also includes increases to public safety per the preliminary memorandums of understanding, as well as the replacement of fire department apparatus and radios for the police department. The right-of-way program that was presented to council by the Transportation Department is also included in the forecast. And the city issued certificates of participation in fiscal year '22 to pay down unfunded liability in the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, or PSPRS. The debt service payment for those certificates in fiscal year '25 is 19.5 million and increases to an average of 20.9 million for fiscal years '26 through '29. We also have $20 million in committed fund balance for the pension reserve fund in fiscal year '25. Additional general fund expenditure assumptions include funding for the building maintenance reserve at $1.8 million per year and the addition of $1 million ongoing for park maintenance so that we can focus on that deferred maintenance. The vehicle replacement fund increased from $3.2 million to $3.5 million in fiscal year '25, which is an 8% increase over the current fiscal year. The project for the construction of the parking garage at the Vi Resort is also included in the forecast. It includes $16 million in the current fiscal year and $54.7 million in fiscal year '25. And after revenue offsets, the city's total investment is $12.7 million. Contingency is budgeted at $5 million for fiscal year '25. We removed the contingency in future fiscal years to make the forecast a little bit easier to read. As council may remember, we had two different totals at the bottom of the forecast previously, one that was titled fund balance with contingency and one that was titled fund balance without contingency. By removing that, you can kind of see where the fund balance will land without using the contingency only in the the current fiscal year and the fiscal year that we're we're developing as part of this budget process. The amount included while developing the budget can can be evaluated annually. And as a reminder, the use of contingency requires council approval. And with that, that brings us to the general fund forecast. The beginning fund balance is at the top of each row, followed by that fiscal year's operating revenue, ongoing operating expenditures, one-time operating expenditures, net transfers, and contingency. The gold line in the chart shows the surplus or deficit per year, which means if fund balance is either being added to or drawn down. Ending fund balance is below the gold line and the assigned fund balances are listed below the ending fund balance. Some of those assignments have been removed in fiscal year '25 and forward because those items will be added to the budget in an ongoing manner and no longer need to be assigned. The assigned fund balance, the unassigned fund balance is the last gray row toward the bottom of the chart. The city's new fund balance policy is that the unassigned fund balance is 25% of ongoing expenditures. And as you can see in the forecast, we meet the fund balance policy throughout the forecast. In fiscal year '29, if we do not spend the $5 million in contingency budgeted in fiscal year '24, the current fiscal year, and next year, fiscal year '25, the unassigned fund balance would be almost 92 million. So to summarize the general fund, the changes in city sales tax include the reduction of residential rental tax, the slowdown of construction sales tax, and increases in sales tax due to the addition of Vi. The forecast includes an investment of in capital of $116 million in fiscal year '25. All projects included have received council consensus or approval and some focus on deferred maintenance. We will continue to monitor revenues in the economy closely and adjust for a possible recession or inflation in future years. As is our practice, the forecast is conservative to ensure financial stability.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just one question. I want to clarify the, you said that there was a 90-some-odd-million fund balance at the end of fiscal '23 or '24? I mean, '24 or '25? What was that?
The fiscal year '28, '29 ending unassigned fund balance. It's towards the bottom right, yeah, bottom right-hand corner is 81, 979, 325. If we don't spend the 5 million of contingency in the current fiscal year and the 5 million that we have built into the budget for fiscal year '25, that number goes up by 10 million.
Okay, so that's assumed that we are using the fund, the the contingency?
That's correct.
Okay. And so the forecasted 2425 unassigned fund balance is 132 million?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Malinar, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And with that, we'll move into the special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are legally restricted. The transportation and HERF funds are capital-intensive. The capital plans for those programs will be updated during the budget process. Revenue assumptions for the Highway User Revenue Fund, or HERF, as is commonly referred to, we show extremely conservative growth in that area. And transportation sales tax, public safety sales tax police, and public safety sales tax fire have the same revenue assumptions as the general fund. So for the Highway User Revenue Fund, or HERF, we have a 2% annual increase to revenue assumed in the forecast. The capital outlay within this program includes $25.4 million in pavement management. Again, that project will be updated as part of the fiscal year '25 through '34 Capital Improvement Plan. And council will begin to see updates to the CIP on February 6th. Contingency in the HERF fund has been budgeted at 1.5 per year for the current fiscal year of '24 and next year for fiscal year '25. This fund typically does not use its contingency. And as you can see, they are above their fund balance policy at the end of fiscal year '29. The transportation sales tax fund has the same sales tax revenue assumptions as the general fund. Capital outlay in this in this fund also includes $94.2 million in investment in pavement management. Contingency in the transportation sales tax fund has been budgeted at $300,000 for fiscal year '25, and this fund typically does not spend its contingency. And as you can see, the fund is above its fund balance policy throughout the forecast. The public safety sales tax for police includes the same revenue assumptions as the general fund. There are no expenditures that take place in this fund. The funds are transferred into the general fund to cover expenditures in the police department. There's a planned drawdown of fund balance annually that you can see in the gold surplus deficit line in the forecast, and this fund is also above its fund balance policy throughout the forecast. The public safety sales tax fire fund includes, again, the same revenue assumptions as the general fund, and there are no expenditures in this fund as well. The funds are transferred to the general fund to cover expenditures in the fire department. There's a planned drawdown of fund balance annually that you can see in the gold surplus deficit line until fiscal year '25, '29, and this fund is above its fund balance policy at the end of the forecast. So to summarize the special revenue funds, we will continue to watch revenues in the economy closely and we will manage the capital outlay to stay within their fund balance policies. Moving into the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds include solid waste, landfill, and the water and sewer funds. These funds are supported primarily from user fees or charges and operate much like a non-for-profit business. The revenue assumptions in the forecast assume council-approved rate increases only, as well as some nominal growth in revenues. Enterprise funds typically are more capital-intensive operations. The solid waste fund includes council-adopted rate increases and surcharges. The solid waste fund includes council-adopted rate increases and surcharges. As you can see throughout the forecast, there is a drawdown of fund balance resulting in the fund not meeting its fund balance in fiscal year twenty-seven. This can be managed through the modification of their capital plan or revision of their current rate structure. The landfill fund includes the council-adopted fee structure. Capital outlay in this fund includes the expansion of the north cell at the landfill. This fund also has a contingency amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, which is typically unspent at the end of the fiscal year, and the landfill fund meets its fund balance policy throughout the forecast. The water and sewer fund includes council-adopted rate increases only. This fund also assumes the issuance of debt throughout the forecast to assist with the execution of their capital program. As you can see in the forecast, the water and sewer fund begins to not meet its fund balance policy in fiscal year twenty-six. This can be managed through the modification of their capital plan or a revision of their current rate structure.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you remind me when we last did the last rate adjustment for water and sewer? And I think we did the solid waste at the same time.
Mayor, members of the council, to my best recollection, we are in January, we will be in the third year of a five-year plan, so three years ago. We are in the process, I understand from Water and working with them, of hiring a rate consultant for water and sewer to take a look at this, and we will be coming back to council with some options, probably in the fall, once the study is completed. We're good for a bit here for the remainder of this year and next, but it is something that we're going to need to be looking at, and so we're going to get a rate consultant onboard and give you some options. We are seeing pressure on this fund again, mainly because of raw water costs and chemical costs that are not really in the control of the water department. Inflation on those particular items has been greater than anticipated, so we'll get someone onboard to take a look at this and bring council back some options.
Mayor?
Did you finish?
I'm going to say I told you so, but that's why five-year rate adoptions are a little risky. Thank you.
I noted that you said that when we're talking about enterprise funds, that the expenditures can be adjusted in two ways, by a rate increase or by modification of capital outlay. I'd like to see both come before us, before you immediately jump to a new rate structure. I'd like to know that there is some kind of contingency plan where capital outlay can be adjusted to offset increased rates. Thank you.
Mayor? The... When was our last water rate increase? Was that two years ago?
Mayor, members of the council, again, to my recollection, in January, we will have year three of a five-year plan.
Okay. Would staff have... Because I believe that last water rate increase was with regard to infrastructure, a lot of equipment that needed to be replaced. Would staff have an update for the council on completed projects and where we are with spending down some of that increase that provided the infrastructure relief?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm sure we can do that. I'm speaking on behalf of the water department, but also, you'll see in January as part of their... When we present and work on their CIP, what plans they have for the future as well, and so we can talk about what projects they've finished and also what plans they have for additional capital.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. And city manager and I spoke briefly about that, so I'd like to see it, and I'm sure the rest of the council would, and if it's coming in January, it can wait until January. Thank you.
And with that, to summarize, the enterprise funds, we, again, will continue to watch revenues in the economy closely. We can manage the capital outlay to minimize debt service costs, ensure responsible timing of rate adjustments, and plan for future debt issuances if necessary.
Any other questions?
That brings us to the last slide in the presentation, which just highlights the next budget workshop, which will take place on February sixth in this room, where we will cover the fiscal year twenty-five through thirty-four Capital Improvement Plan. Oh, I'm sorry. All right? That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Power, item three.
Swaro Ranch Park Master Plan Design Concept.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report for the next three items will be our interim director of Parks and Recreation, John Kennedy, and he'll start first with the Swaro Ranch Park Master Plan Update.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor and council, it's great to be here today to introduce the Swaro Ranch Park Master Plan Concept. So this is a project staff's been working on for a little bit of time, and we are seeking council consensus on the master plan concept for Swaro Ranch Park. I'll emphasize that, you know, there's been a lot of public input, you know, sought throughout this process. It is a conceptual plan at this time, and as we get to the end of the presentation, you'll see an estimated probable cost, that the one thing I'll guarantee you is that will change down the road, but at least we will start... It's a place for us to start. So here on this first slide, you see some old historical photos from historic Swaro Ranch Park, followed by the historic area site plan from several years ago, from nineteen-eighty, and some additional photos from around that timeframe as well. And then here, we've got existing conditions here at Swaro Ranch Park. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to our deputy director, Ms. Heidi Boriga.
Mayor and council, good afternoon and happy holidays. I come with the fun stuff today. I'd like to share with you how we got to what we're going to present to you today, and what we did is a lot of public outreach. We did a survey that went for three weeks from September to October. We got about a hundred-and-seventy responses with that, and with those responses, we sat down with the concept team and came up with what we're going to present. We had a public open house. We put QR codes up in eleven locations throughout Swaro Ranch Park, and we did email blasts, we posted on Facebook pages, all kinds of outreach in order to get to this point. So what you'll see next is really the fun part. This is the overview. This is all the new proposed amenities that we're going to present to you, and you'll see a majority of them in the following slides. The things I'd like to highlight, though, are the installed automatic entry gates. This allows staff to open and close the gates on a program timed and not take the efforts of a ranger to get there exactly at ten o'clock to shut something down. As we know, the historic side has an earlier closer, so it really helps in maintaining that as well. We are planning on putting, proposing new roofs on the historic structures, and those new roofs will be consistent with what is currently there. We would like to restore the historic groves, and you'll see outlined on this, the citrus, the stone fruit, the date palm, and the pecan groves. We'd like to increase the visibility of the main entrance off of Fifty-Ninth Avenue, and in a few slides, we'll show you what that looks like. We'd like to add a destination playground, an interactive splash pad. We'd like to improve the dog park and add an additional dog park, and we'd like to include some pickleball courts with the shade canopy. What you'll see on this next slide is something that we are also proposing, is four walking loops on property. So whether you're out to enjoy the park and just take a walk, or you're out with your kids at a baseball game, you can enjoy one of the four walking loops that we're proposing. And as I mentioned, an enhancement to the entry points. This right here is an enhancement to the sixty-third entrance parking lot to Swaro Ranch Park. We have the automated gates, automatic gates, excuse me, again, scheduled open and closed time, and a lighted and transparent sign, really a destination sign, so that people know where they are. This is what it would show at nighttime, and really, that visibility through the sign helps with our rangers and security of the area.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I know, I mean, the Swaro Ranch Park there, you know, especially in historic area, they host wedding receptions and things like that. Will there be some sort of accommodation, and that... So those things, events might last later than when this gate automatically closes. So will it open for cars that are already inside automatically, or we don't want to, you know, end up trapping, you know, a wedding party in the park?
Mayor and councilmember Tomachoff, yes. That's the beauty of them being automatic-timed. Also, if there is an event that is later, we can keep the gates open later, but upon exit, when someone approaches the gate, it'll automatically...
Automatically, okay. Thank you.
On the next slide here, we have the enhancement of the Fifty-Ninth Entrance. This was one of the top priorities of the survey that had went out. If you are driving north and southbound on Fifty-Ninth Avenue, you really don't know that you've landed to this destination, and this really is that key monument to let you know that you're here. Again, it is transparent and see-through, so that, safety reasons, you can see pedestrians walking, vehicles driving down the road, and then on the next slide, we'll show you here what it will look like at nighttime, really monumenting that you found this location. And here's where the fun stuff really begins. This is what we call the central area. We have soccer field upgrades with turf. We have a destination play structure, a splash pad, volleyball, pickleball courts, and an added restroom, and this really just shows you the aerial of the lay of the land on what it will look like. Just in up close of what the pickleball courts would look like. We're proposing putting in six courts. They will be lit, and we'll show you on the next slide, but there is a proposed new restroom in that area as well. This is what the concept of the restroom would look like outside of the pickleball area. We know pickleball is extremely popular right now, and adding this additional restroom area to that southern side of the park, we thought really was monumental. Our lighted volleyball courts, four of them. And this, again, is really a bird's-eye view of what this central area is going to look like. You'll see the splash pad down at the bottom of the page. It does have a shade structure casting some shade onto the splash pad. You'll see those big, looks-like leaves. Those actually are structural leaves, which are the shade structures in the playground area, and again, just gives you an overall view of what the walking path can look like around this centralized play area. Another shot of what this will look like. Again, you can see the shade from the shade structure coming down onto that splash pad area, as well as the shade leaf structures. And this just gives you really a view of what walking around this destination will look like. You really feel like you're in a park. You really feel like you've hit a destination. A little serenity with the greenery and the noise of the children playing. And what I wanted to point out in this concept right here is, we are including the existing structure that currently resides at Swaro Ranch Park, and what we're creating here with this is really creating a lookout point. Parents can stand up there, enjoy their coffee, do what they want to do, and still have an overlook of what the children are doing below. Just another great picture of these leaves really tying nature into this play area, coming up with something to really make this a destination playground. And again, keeping that theme, a historic, part of the concepts we have on this with the playground are tractors, and you'll see next, a windmill, and they are true playground pieces that tie into that historic side of Swaro Ranch Park. Again, this is just another shot, just creating a beautiful stroll through the splash pad to the playground and what the grounds might look like. And what I'd like to show you next, all two are two alternatives that we had the design team come up with. One of them is a Fifty-Ninth Avenue streetscape, and what this is, is the distance of Fifty-Ninth Avenue from the north to the south. It is creating the sidewalk up on the edge of the park, keep pulling it away from the street, and creating, if you will, a pony wall, really a visual, really something beautiful to guide people into the park. And the next one that we have also as an alternative here is a lily pond on the historic side of Swaro Ranch Park. And if you don't mind, John, going back to the slide, I'd like to show you on the main slide, and I apologize for going all the way back, but I'd like to show you where that lives in the park. If you look on the historic side, you will see number twenty-two. That is the proposed location for the lily pond in this project. Again, it is an alternative. We did take this concept to the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, and they recommended the concept minus the lily pond, but we wanted to present it to you as an alternative. Thank you. And you'll see here, there are a couple of slides of what this lily pond could look like, again, in concept. You'll see the fruit packing shed there, just to the east, the lily pond, and then a bridge going over the lily pond. And just another view of what the lily pond can look like at nighttime. And with that, I turn it back to you.
Great. Thank you, Heidi. So with this master concept plan, we had developed a probable cost estimate that you'll see in front of you. Currently, this project is currently unfunded, and you see the options here. The main probable cost is just a little bit over twenty-four million, and then you'll see the two different alternatives. They're separately, a little over two million for the streetscape along Fifty-Ninth Avenue, as well as one-point-three million in the alternative for the lily pond, for a grand total, if you include both alternatives, of about twenty-seven-point-six million dollars. So once, you know, our next steps, if this concept plan would be approved, next steps would be, staff would work closely with budget and finance teams to identify timing and potential funding sources and work through the capital improvement and budget process to come back to council. With that, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you were pointing at me. Hard to tell.
I was.
Okay. On page seventeen, I think, of the slide presentation, it looks like, is there a covered bridge in there or something?
I apologize. Mayor and councilmember Turner, what that is, is a play structure. So the existing structure in the park, you can take a bridge across to a play structure, which then has a slide and some climbing apparatus. Is that what we're talking about, just to the north of the leaf canopies?
I'm looking just above the leaf canopy on the... To the right.
Yes, sir. That is a play structure with a roof, like a barn play structure, if you will.
Okay. I was just concerned about sight and visibility and not having a place for undesirable behavior to occur. The... I really can't emphasize strongly enough how much I feel that the lily pond needs to be included here. It's the restoration of a historic feature of the park that was there in the early, well, late eighteen-hundreds, early nineteen-hundreds. We have historic photographs that show it and all of that. I also think that it adds a lovely feature to the park. It's very, you know, the ones I've seen in other communities are just very nice. We have water features of lakes and things like this at our other parks, so it's not like we're stepping out at all. You know, it's not introducing any hazard that doesn't exist elsewhere in the city, but I think for the historical aspect of it, and then just that peaceful ambiance that it provides, and all I think, and who knows, maybe even some coy. But I just think it adds a lot to the park, and I think it's helpful to maintain its historic accuracy. I really would appreciate the council's support for that. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you. The trees in the background, close to the horizon, they look like pine trees. I'm not familiar with those trees. Is that something that's planned on being planted, or is that supposed to be citrus trees?
Mayor, members of council, that is really just part of this concept. Mayor, Members of Council, that is really just part of this concept design, not as, uh, not, not as an actual feature. You know, as we, as we were to work through design plans, is when we would come up with specific, the species outside of the groves that already mentioned citrus and pecan groves and, and so on.
Okay. Uh, so go back to the structure for the shade that looked like leaves. Uh, have they done, uh, the computer model that, that has the sun and where the shade falls? It, uh, was that laid out that way or is it just a concept right now and that has not been done yet?
Mayor and council members, that's, that is correct. It's just a concept at this point. Moving forward, as we look at design, they would model that to what, to choose the right angles to provide the most optimum, uh, amount of shade.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the only, maybe I'm missing it. The only thing I saw being added to the, uh, sports fields, the four baseball fields, is a walking loop? Is there gonna be any investment in the, cause I believe that people, do people pay to, pay to use those fields? Is there gonna be any, any investment in the four baseball fields? I know they get heavily used there and I, I don't have anybody that age anymore to go watch, play baseball. But, um, um, what's the story with the baseball fields?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, at this point in time, this plan does not include any upgrades to the, to the, uh, ball field complex. Um, there is ongoing maintenance that we have done, uh, some smaller in-house projects of, uh, laser leveling infields, replacing, uh, home plate areas and addressing some of those areas, uh, you know, on an in-house basis. Uh, but at this time, this concept plan, it was not, uh, did not cover any additional enhancements to the ball fields.
Um, Mayor, if I could, what, so is there, but there is gonna be an investment to build a walking path around them? Is that, is that what I'm under, looking at when I see here?
Mayor and council members, yes. The, that's one of the main features that, that consistently comes up in surveys and public input is folks', um, importance of walking loops, especially in walking trails throughout parks. So that is where that came from, yes.
Okay. Um, I mean, there's gonna be two other, two other loops to walk in the park. I don't know. I just feel like, you know, the baseball fields, it's, it's probably been a year or two since I've been to a baseball game there, but, um, it looked like they could use some TLC. So I don't know what the cost is for that sports loop and that the park's not in my district. But I don't know that we need three separate loops there for wa, for walking paths. And since, especially since we're not doing any kind of facelift or anything with the baseball field. Um, I don't know whether anybody want to consider that, but those get used and people pay to use those fields as well. They're not, they're not used for, they're not used for free. Um, and especially in the early spring, they are quite busy. So, um, I don't know. What is the cost for the, for the walking path? And could that go towards the sports fields? There was a consensus for that.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, I don't believe we have the cost broken down all the way per walking loop. That's something we could look into. Uh, but also being that this is a concept plan, as we move forward in, in looking in design, those are alternatives that we could look at and that could be considered in those steps.
Okay, thank you. Because I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna invest in the park, I, I feel like we should, we should also do what we can to upgrade the facilities, especially because it, it, people are paying to use them. And, um, my last question, Mayor, is, I'm trying to find the last page here. Are, are you considering, um, and I guess Councilmember Turner, um, adopting the lily pond and the 59th Avenue streetscape appro, improvements? We didn't talk about the 59th Avenue streetscape improvements.
If I may, then Mayor respond. I am adamant that the lily pond needs to be done. I would love to have the 59th Avenue streetscape improvements too. I don't know if it's more appropriate to do that out of parks money or out of right of way money. Um, or utilize both or whatever we need to do. But, um, the, uh, based on the input I get from residents and, you know, the, I've, I don't find the 59th Avenue frontage particularly attractive, but I don't necessarily see it as a detriment. But it would certainly be a nice addition that you can enjoy whether you're going into the park or not. Um, that's why I wonder whether it should be paid more with park funds or with, you know, uh, right of way or street funds or something like that. So if we do that project perhaps out of another fund, that would give money for, um, the sports fields that you were concerned about. But, uh, I do feel that the, uh, my first priority for adds on to this would be the lily pond.
Mayor, may I respond? Uh, I support the lily pond, especially because of the, I, I wasn't aware there ever was a lily pond there. So, um, but I mean, it's, it's a historic, um, feature of the park and I support that. Um, the 59th Avenue, I think that discussion of, of where the money is gonna come from or what kind of combination, um, of, you know, different, um, funds could, could cover that also. And I, I don't know whether there's gonna be a consensus to at least explore the possibility of investing some money into the, into the baseball fields. I feel, um, that it's kind of being left, left out, especially because they're gonna build a walking path around it, but not do anything to improve the fields. Um, I don't know if there's been an assessment done on what could be done there or, or whatever. But maybe, are, are you looking to get this adopted sooner rather than later or is this coming back to us?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Tomachoff, this is, uh, a concept design. We were looking for consensus. The, again, the, the next steps would be to work on design, which would include some additional opportunities for input. And that would happen before we would come back to this council.
Mayor, if I could, and Members of the Council, um, I think the important thing or, or one of the important things is, um, uh, regarding these two alternatives. If there's a consensus of the council to move forward with one or both of those alternatives, then as Mr. Kennedy said earlier, the next, one of the next steps would be to work with budget and finance. We, we're trying to figure out if we're trying to design a $24 million park or a $27 million park. And even that is a very high level probable cost. Uh, it's, it's not to be meant that, oh, it's gonna absolutely cost that amount as the design develops. Um, and in doing so, we would look at what possible funding sources, uh, would be available for that and appropriate. Um, and then as design continues, we'd come back with what are the real costs and what are the costs of the different elements as we, uh, move forward. Um, and so, um, I just wanted to mention again that, that's probably one of the more important things is do, do we want to include all of those alternatives? So when we go back and try to figure out how we might fund it, we, we kind of have an idea of what council's plan is.
Right, Mayor?
Thank you. I think you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound. I think these concepts are wonderful. I absolutely love them. Um, I love the play structures. I love the idea of pickleball courts lighted at night. I absolutely love the idea of the lily pond. In fact, I have some koi fish that I could donate if needed. Um, but, and I like the 59th Avenue pony wall streetscape improvements. I think we should, we should do the whole thing. We're, we're talking about a difference of 3 million. And I know that sounds a lot of money to the general public, but in government speak, that's not a lot of money. And I think we should try, strive to do as very much of the entire concept as we can, especially the lily pond and the 59th Avenue improvements. It's a beautiful concept. And this will add so much to Swallow Park, which is a major central park in the city. Um, kudos to whoever came up with these, these designs. They're absolutely wonderful. Mayor?
Hold on a minute. Hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a few questions here. Um, I'll, I'll begin with, um, thank you for the presentation. It's a really good illustration of what could happen. Um, there's been, there's always some issues with parking along Brown Street. So with that said, have we done a parking study for that part? Do we have enough parking? That's the first question.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Aldama, yes, a parking study was, uh, part of this, uh, this design or concept design project.
And it didn't demonstrate the need for expanding the parking lots or anything like that?
Mayor, Member of Council, that is correct.
That is good to know. Thank you. Um, and then second one is, uh, the soccer fields. Will those be like multi-use fields? Football, soccer, or just dedicated to soccer?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Aldama, it would be, you could be utilized for multi, multi-sports. Um, it would be grass. Um, and so we'd have the flexibility of adding lines, uh, per the need, uh, based on size.
Okay, so the, the illustration shows the soccer field already lined. That's just to illustrate a field. It's not gonna be lined permanently or artificial turf or anything like that. Um, second thing is those fields, those three fields will be open to the public? Or will any of them be fee-based and locked behind fence and gate?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Aldama, this, this concept plan proposes removing the gate that's around the southern main soccer field. And there is no gate, uh, around the others. And they are available for reservation, um, for reservation or drop-in use. So reservation typically comes with a fee where the drop-in use is, is, uh, first come, first served.
That is a good proposal. Thank you for that. And then lastly, with regard to the, regarding the pond and the walk-in track around the baseball fields, walking is one of the, the most activity that people do at a park. And they show up to go walk. And so here, I've, I've, I've sat there and people just walk every sidewalk they can. So I think there's a lot of value in that track around the baseball field. I'm kind of having just a little trouble which one, the pond or the track. I would think the track would probably garner more use. But then I also think with the simple IGA with, uh, Glendale Community College, I think they already have the gates open. Uh, members of the community can walk that track all day long. They're, they're welcome there. So, um, and then the, the pond itself, I'm looking at your, your data on the, um, the survey. It was done over three weeks, 170 participants. 97% of them, uh, were active. And you went through a lot of avenues to get it out. Again, it's only 170. In that survey, was the, was the pond part of that survey?
Mayor, Councilmembers, I don't know for sure if it was spelled out exactly. We would need to look at it to, to confirm. I'd hate to comment on something I'm not sure of.
Okay, that's, that, that's the issue here. Now, I, I may think that a track is probably more useful. Uh, I see a lot of value in that, in that pond. But if folks didn't know that a pond could be in there, it, it's hard for you to come over and say whether it's, uh, needed or not. Can you find that out? And if you find out that it was not included in that survey, how can we go back out to those folks or new folks and say, hey, would you entertain having a, uh, pond in that area? It'd make a big difference.
Yeah, Mayor, Members of Council, that, you know, we do have, uh, the capability to, to reach out to folks and, and, and ask another question. Whether we would reach the exact folks, um, uh, is, is undetermined at this point.
Yeah, I, I think if you went out and surveyed, uh, some, and then the, the Parks and Recreation Commission could help. But I'd like to see how, um, our citizens feel about having that, that pond. I think there's a lot of value to it, but I'd certainly like to see that.
Mayor, Members of the Council, um, one of the things that we can do, i- if, if it's the consensus of the council to move forward and just for the sake of this discussion with all of these concepts, then as the designs progress, we will go back out to the public with, with more about the designs. Again, these are kind of very high level. Um, and so at that point in time, we could also do some more, um, looking at the, at the pond in particular. Um, a, a, and, and how it is designed, if it is to be there. And we'll get some feedback about whether people, um, want it or like it or, or not at that time as well.
Well, that could work. However, I mean, I, I, I'll go out on the limb and say that I will support both right now. But if we give you that consensus, you're, you're, I already have the consensus. There's no reason to go out and survey anybody. I'm just wondering if, if, uh, those 170 participants, and I'm not asking to go find them, I'm just saying, would, could they have said, no, we don't, we'd rather have X or y, yes, absolutely? Uh, cause you're here for consensus. You're asking us, should we include the pond or not? For me, it's, well, what did the, the surveyors say? Well, they may have not been included. So for now, I would say that I'm in, I would be in favor of keeping the pond in the project. Uh, no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, uh, agree with the sentiments that, uh, this is an awesome plan. I really look forward to, uh, seeing our, uh, historic Swallow Ranch Park restored to, uh, to its glory. Uh, and I think these, these concepts all do that. And I would be in favor of, of really investing. If we're gonna do it, let's do it right. Uh, let's go all the way in and make it a park that the entire community is gonna want to come to. And, um, the only question I've had was, and I don't know that, you mentioned it, and, and I don't remember where this all fits in the, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, master, uh, capital expenditure. Uh, is it, is it planned for 2024, 2025? Where is it exactly at and how does that all fit in?
Uh, Mayor, Members of this, of the council. Um, at, at the current time, it's not in the first five years of the plan because it doesn't have an identified funding source. Um, again, going back to what I said before, if, if council wants to move forward, we'd have to look at where would we have the funding? We're possibly looking at another, um, geo-bond, uh, election for parks because we are out of parks authority. And then no doubt with a project this large, it would come in phases. So we would look at what bond authority, if we're able to get, uh, bond authority, if we are able to identify other funding sources, and then how the project could be phased in over time, given all of those different considerations. So does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, in, in part. The, the last part that, uh, where do you anticipate? If we were to move forward, what, what budget year do you think? Uh, I mean, you said it would be done over time, but, uh, what budget year or years do you think this would be done over?
Um, Mayor, Members of the council, I really couldn't speculate at this moment because we are still in the process with the new authority that we have for public safety and streets in planning those, uh, bond issuances out. And then if we have authority for this, then we have to weave those in, um, and figure out how we can do all of the projects, um, and keep the, uh, secondary property tax levy flat. So it's a timing thing. And again, we'd have to just sort of look at how we phase everything out. Right now, we don't have authority to issue park bonds anyway. So it's sort of, until we have the authority, we can't start figuring out when we're gonna be able to do some of these things. If it's a council priori, having said that, if it's a council priority to do it, then we would bring it back to the council to talk about their priority if this is gonna take precedent over some other project. But that, that would really be your decision, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
So, so there are other projects planned in the, in the capital budget that, and this is not over the next five years. So we'd have to have that discussion.
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Uh, could somebody remind me, how many people were in the survey?
Mayor, there is 170 responses to the survey.
And, and what are you looking at? The total cost of the project?
To include both alternatives, the, the probable cost estimate right now is just over 27 million.
Okay, so, yeah, my brain's not working that fast. That's, it just seems like for $27 million, it seems like we're putting a lot of faith into a few people. Um, I, I like everything that's been talked about, but, uh, that's a lot of money. I, I would hope that we would go out and have more people participating before decisions are made. Um, and then on the bonds, uh, certainly, if we're gonna pay for this, if we decide to do this when we move forward, uh, it's gonna require bonding and then it's gonna require a lot of work on everybody from this council. It can't be some people doing it and other people standing on the sidelines. Uh, so it's gonna take a commitment from everybody to make this happen. And, uh, and it's gonna take our voters. Uh, they have to believe in the project. And, uh, we have to be able to present to them, as, as we did transportation and public safety, that there's a, a need and a want and a desire. Um, and so, um, again, I, I can support the concept. I, I like it. I, I just, uh, I, I just hope that we get, um, more input from our citizens. It just seems like 170 people or not a lot of people for, uh, $27 million. That's, that's just my opinion. Uh, there was somebody else who wanted to talk. You wanted to talk next? Go ahead. And then you'll be next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, or I guess to what you've just said, it, it shows our residents the value of them being involved and, and their input. the value of them being involved and, and their input that, um, you know, that those who were involved and took the time to answer the survey along with the members of our commission. And I believe that there's a fair amount of professional staff advice and, and the consultant and all of that. It's not just, this wasn't all based on response, it's the mix of it all together. But it shows our residents that even, you know, that you get involved, you can make a difference. You stand up and say, I want this, I want the sports loop, I want these other things, that you make a difference. And that, I think hopefully encourages more residents to be involved. Um, the mayor did mention the, the lovely trees that are in the visuals, and I'm confident particularly if you look at, uh, slide 12, but, and then the others from a different angle, that those trees that are depicted there is actually the historic pecan grove. And that's how it looked 20 or 30 years ago. The trees were big and full, and the pecan grove is historic. It tells part of the story of agriculture and irrigation on that ranch. And I know I use it when I speak to residents, uh, out there about, um, the whole thing. And, uh, so I'm glad to see that we're keeping it, and I would like to be sure that as trees die, they're being replaced with other pecan trees. Uh, sometimes I go out and see maybe a cottonwood's been slid in here or something else. But it's part of, that is part of the historic story of the ranch, the pecan grove as a, uh, as a revenue source for the ranch, you know, back in the 1900s. And also it helps tell the story of the irrigation as to why those, I won't tell you the story, but as to why those trees are there, the type located where they are is all part of the history of the agricultural aspect of the ranch, which is, um, is still important. I did have a question on, I guess it's slide, looks like nine. Um, and the one before it. That particular sign would be located where in the park? Sign in those gates?
Mayor, council members and Councilmember Turner, those particular two are the 63rd Avenue entry, uh, near the, uh, existing dog park.
Okay, gotcha now. Very good. All for the moment, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I had, forgot to ask this question. I want to make sure I understand on slide, where am I? Slide six. All right, so the existing dog park is to the west of the path that takes you into the sports fields. Is that right? That's where the existing dog park is?
Mayor, council members, that's correct.
And so you're ta- you're talking about expanding the dog park to the other side of that?
Mayor, council member, yes, adding an additional, uh, cell, so to speak.
Okay, I know, so were we getting feedback from residents that that existing amount of space for the dog park isn't sufficient?
Mayor, members of council, from, from our, uh, not directly from this particular survey, but from general feedback overall about the conditions of the dog park is where we, uh, where we did receive informa- or feedback.
To, and the, but the dog park goes all the way around that curve? And, I mean, it's the, that hole on your, on slide six, that whole green space that you're showing on this number 17 to the left, is all of that is dog park or just there's like a line there? So I just?
Uh, Mayor, members of council, yes, it continues all the way up, up of that curve. Correct.
Is the dog park. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Your consensus, uh, with everything proposed for them to move forward?
Yes.
Now, look, you got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Barra, Adam Pore?
Thunderbird Conservation Park Master Plan Design Concept.
Mayor, members of council, since I said it was great to be here about Soraal Ranch Park, it's also great to be here about Thunderbird Conservation Park Master Plan. So, uh, these, uh, master plans have been running concurrently. We've been working on them for, for a little while. And we are here to seek consensus on this master plan concept, uh, for Thunderbird Conservation Park, the, the three trailheads. So not, it's, it's not a master plan concept for the entire conservation park itself. It's focused on the, the three different trailheads. Uh, gone through a very similar process, uh, public outreach, where we had a survey that was open, uh, for about three weeks. Uh, we had 196 responses. Um, we held a, a public house, a public open house was held at, up at the Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center. And, uh, we also posted some QR, QR code notification signs, uh, at 10 different locations around the park uh, to gather input, uh, and went through, you know, council member newsletters, HOA emails, and some of our own email, uh, email blast to gather, uh, public input and feedback on this particular concept plan. What this slide here shows you is just an overall, uh, aerial view. We have the three different, uh, trailheads that exist. Up in the upper right-hand corner is 55th Avenue and Pinnacle Peak. Moving southwest into the 59th Avenue entrance. And then over on, on the far, uh, left of your, of your screen is the 67th Avenue Trailhead. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Director Ms. Heidi Boriga to take us through the details.
Mayor and council members, more fun stuff for you. This first slide that you'll see is the 55th Trailhead Concept. A few things I'd like to point out on here for you is we are proposing, again, automatic gated entry. Helps with closure and opening of the park and commitment on the rangers and other things taking place throughout the city. This, uh, automatic gate will be the same as we had just talked about where upon exit, if you are left in there, the gate will open for you so that you're not trapped inside. We are planning, uh, trailhead restroom and shade structure, as you see identified on number six on this map, and we'll show you some slides on that. We are proposing a plaza drop-off area as well, just outside of the proposed restroom area. We're talk, we are proposing a direct ADA access to the Flatlander Trail, which is a barrier-free trail. And this new proposed parking lot, uh, we will not be losing parking spaces. In fact, we're gaining 16 parking spaces in this parking lot with the concepts that you'll be seeing next. So what we have for you on this next slide is exactly what I had just talked about with the proposed restrooms and shade structure. What you'll, it's number six on the map that you previously just saw, and this is just an aerial looking down of what it would look like. You'll see you enter off of 55th, your entry plaza. You have your restrooms and then some shaded seating. The next diagram really shows you conceptually what this will look like, your shaded seating and your restroom areas. And this diagram that you see here is coming in the entrance off of 55th Avenue heading straight, and you can see that building just in front of you right there that is the restroom and shaded seating area. And this really is a great concept to this trailhead. As right now, when you enter the parking lot, there is no monument. This is where you are. This is a great gathering space, a space that we can provide information about the trailhead. And this next slide here is if you are standing underneath the shaded area, looking out into the parking lot. Again, this becomes a gathering place where people can meet up with each other before or after hikes, gather information about the trailhead, do anything that they need to do there. This next concept is the 59th Trailhead. We know this to be the most popular, the most used trailhead of the three. I'd like to point out a few things here. Again, the automated gate entry and exits. The trailhead restroom and structure, that's identified as number six on this map. It is a relocation. We're also proposing a shaded structure. We are proposing number eight. You'll see up above the red lines. That's currently an access road, and we want to transform that into a walking path. We are proposing the plaza drop-off area. And we are proposing around the perimeter of the parking lot, an eight-foot solid surface walking loop. You'll see on this next diagram is that exactly the restroom and shade structure. It is number six and number 11 on the previous slide. And you can see here that the shaded structure goes over the existing wash, and that's identified a little bit easier to tell on the next slide. You'll see here, so if you are in the parking lot, which would be to the right of the picture that you see, you, uh, on the next slide, you'll be able to see, you can see into, you can see the restroom stalls for security reasons, but then on the other side is the shaded canopy going over the existing wash. This right here is the entrance off of 59th, driving into the parking lot. This really shows that you've landed, you know where you're at, you know where to park. There's a circular flow to help you find parking. And there's also an easily identified building, which is the shaded, um, shaded area, the restroom, and the drop-off zone, the entry plaza, as we call it for people to gather. Again, just another photo of what that would look like. And when I had mentioned, um, what it looks like from the parking lot, again, in concept, but we have these slats on the exterior of the restroom. So there's a little bit of privacy, but when you're in the parking structure, you can see through to the front of the restrooms. And with that, we come to the 67th Avenue Trailhead. And this proposed concept, we again have the automatic gate entries, the restroom and shade structure, and the plaza drop-off. And what I'd like to point out here is we have relocated the trailer area. And the reason for doing that is to bring it up closer to the road, but also to help identify this as a true use of this trailhead and not overflow parking from the high school, which is across the street. And just like the other diagram, this is the same structure that you would see on the 55th Trailhead, same floor plan. And the picture that follows, again, with the seated area. And this really is such an upgrade from the current trailhead at 67th Avenue. You can see here off to the left is when you're entering the plaza. You loop around, parking is easily identified, and that structure right there as the gathering spot and a restroom for use. Again, just what it looks like driving in. And this is what the restroom looks like. It really gives you an idea of a visual of the seated area, a gathering spot, people hydrating after their hike. And with that,
Thank you, Heidi. So just as an emphasis, the, the idea here was to emphasize, uh, and work on improving the sense of arrival at these three trailheads. Um, we did, we were leaving the rest of the, of the park in its conservation state, and we're not making any, you know, you know, major, major changes or any changes in throughout the park proper, but it was really to address some ingress and egress issues. Um, some better control of, of access, uh, to the, to the three different trailheads. Uh, provide some educational opportunities in the interpretive, with some interpretive signage in, in the, the restroom facilities, uh, as noted. So, with that, again, I'll emphasize this is a conceptual plan. Um, it comes with this probable cost estimate that again, could change, definitely would change as you work through design documents and so on, should we move forward. Uh, but here, uh, the grand total for the three different trailhead improvements is, uh, 20.3 million dollars. And you can see broken down the three different, uh, uh, trailhead improvements broken down there individually, uh, for your, for your view there. So with that, that concludes our presentation. We'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I got a couple of questions. Um, I like, I like it. I, I think, I mean, I think this is a real gem to have a conservation park of this size in the city. Um, and I'm pretty passionate about this park. But I'm also aware that there's no water at 55th Avenue and Pinnacle Peak. Um, the closest water is City of Phoenix Water to the east. So does this include water infrastructure that would, would be needed to make, make this possible at the 55th and Pinnacle Peak location? Because there's a lot of landscape in there in addition to the restroom.
Mayor and council members, Councilmember Tomashov, yes, that was part of the study. We were able to identify a water source that was also included in the probable cost estimate of what it would take to hook into that location.
So, Mayor, so we would be a, a City of Phoenix water customer for this?
Mayor, members of council, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Um, my second question is, and this is something that, um, I, we had talked to, uh, he's, obviously he just retired today, so he's gone. But we, I had talked to Jim about, and it looks like you're depicting that in the picture on slide, I guess they're not numbered. But at the 59th Avenue, the loop going around the parking lot, is that going to be one-way traffic? Because that was a concept that I, especially if we're going to have pedestrians. Um, and it's not that wide anyway, so, um, it looks like that's what you're showing is one-way traffic on the loop.
Mayor and council members, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Um, is this going to include then, all of this is all going to be repaved because the roads in there? I mean, we filled potholes and stuff, but the roads are, I don't know how old they are. They're very, very old. Um, they're just de- decomposing. So all, this estimate's going to include all of the, uh, whatever pavement work needs to be done on all three of these concepts?
Mayor, council members, yes, that is correct. It is included.
And then I had one more question. Um, funding, um, I, I don't know whether this would qualify for open space. I know we have capacity in open space. Um, and I see, see Ms. Rios pulling her microphone up. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, this, uh, is specifically, this park is specifically called out in the open space bond question when it passed in, I want to say 2007. Uh, but it might have been 1999. I can't remember, um, which one. And, um, so it is eligible. Um, again, it's just a matter of looking at, uh, how we would phase the project and when we have the capacity. We, we have the authority to issue open space bonds. It's a matter of when we would have the capacity to do them and um, we would, again, look back at probably phasing it in trailhead by trailhead in this case, because that's a logical sort of way to do it. Um, and so if we go forward with this, then, uh, it'll be the job of Mr. Kennedy and my staff, other staff to work together to determine how we would, uh, fund it and the timing.
Um, thank you. Um, I li- I like it. The only thing I don't like is the, you know, the, the restrooms and parks are a concern for me, especially in these rem- remote locations. So I don't know, um, you know, and I'm sure that they're, they'll be working with public safety to make sure that we're doing everything we can to, you know, keep lines of sight open and things like that, because especially a lot of the hikers, um, and I'm going to actually, now that I've had my surgery on my Achilles, I'm going to start trying to hike again, um, here pretty soon. But especially how early in the morning and the times of day that these parks are used. Um, it's, it, it's pretty secluded and it's pretty remote. So I just would have a high level of concern for safety of somebody in the restroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Another wonderful concept. Uh, Thunderbird Park is a, is a gem of a park uh, along with Soraal in our city. Um, people, it is very popular. People use it all the time. And what I like about this plan is it's non-invasive. It retains the character and the conservatism of Thunderbird Park, but yet provides an upgrade of amenities for the very people that use it. Um, I think that this is something that's probably been long overdue, especially with the pressure and the number of people that visit the park. Um, it's a wonderful concept again. I love the idea of providing shade, a shaded structure that moves away from the restrooms. And one thing you didn't mention, are there any water fountains or anything in there?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, there will be water fountains included in the restroom.
Thank goodness, because after you hike for an hour, you might need a little water, yeah. Um, yeah, I, I think this is a wonderful concept. And, um, hopefully we can figure out how to fund all these wonderful projects and get them going. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I also like the, uh, concepts that have been presented here today. Um, again, same question. Where does this fit into the, uh, capital improvement plan for parks? And I know as far as money, budget, it sounds like there might be a way for this park with some, uh, bond or some monies, uh, under a different category. Uh, could you address that a little bit further?
Um, Mayor, members of the council, yes, we do have open space bond authority. I don't actually know right now where this is in the plan. I, I believe we have actually $4 million in the budget this year for this, um, to, to get the design going. Um, beyond that, I'm not 100% sure, you know, what, what we have. Um, and then we, it's just a matter of the timing of the issuance of- And then we, it's just a matter of the timing of the issuance of the, the bonds. And we would again probably do it in phases. So as we bring the CIP forward, we'll have a little more information for you about that and, and how we're going to balance those things out.
Thank you, if I may, Mayor. The other concern I had was security again for the restrooms and particularly overnight security. Will they be self-locking? Will you have park rangers go in there, make sure they're secure at night? Those are the same things we just need to make sure we consider as we are moving forward on. Thank you.
Question is for both of the projects, Suaro Ranch and this one, but specifically this one, it's more conservation. The Arizona State Parks and Trails provides grants for these types of projects for cities, towns and for state. Have we looked at any of those grants? And there's also other federal, county and state grants. Have you guys looked at using any grants to offset the dollar amount? Maybe get more amenities even if we kept the 20 million in?
Mayor, members of council, yes, that is something that is, that would be considered and we would research further and go after the grants that we could.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Right, consensus for them to move forward?
Thank you.
Next item?
Glendale City Code revisions, chapter 27, Parks and Recreation.
Mayor, member, members of council, so a little bit of a change in pace from park design and park concept plans to moving over to a project that's been worked on and looked at for a little while. Here is the, some revisions to the city code in chapter 27. Deputy City Manager Rick St. John has graciously offered to give me a hand here and to help get this one kicked off.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This is work that's been in progress for probably a little over a year and a half now in the Parks Department. And Jean Moreno and I, as part of the homeless initiative, weighed in quite a bit on some of the, the changes that were made. So I'll be here today to answer any questions you may have about those changes, why those changes are being made and the potential impacts of those changes on, on our use of the parks. And with that, I'll turn it back over to John for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. St. John. So what we are asking for today is we're seeking council consensus on proposed language to improve. Wrong button there, sorry about that. So chapter 27 of the code outlines the rules and regulations for our Glendale's Parks and Recreation facilities as they relate to management and operations. So in your packet, we sent you a lot of information in addition to the council communication. You had a memo that was summarizing all the highlights of the changes. And then you had two copies of the code, one, the red line version highlighting the, the changes, and then one, a clean copy of what those changes would incorporate. So this presentation, I'll take a high-level overview of those and certainly we'll be able to answer questions as, as they come up, as they, as are needed. So as Mr. St. John mentioned, the revisions address topics that, that might've been raised from just our own internal review in addition to the executive task force on homelessness, some changes in Arizona revised statutes, and then looking at some of our benchmark cities and the changes they've been implementing. So with that, I'll, I'll go through some highlights. Chapter 27-3 or section 27-3 definitions, we added some language in, for camp and camping, scooters, vaping and cannabis, as well as definition of shopping carts. In 2738, under the section of enforcement.
Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Let me just go back to that. I'm, I'm on your memo dated December 12th and it reads, it's under the update section 27-3. And I'm reading, the, the red is what we're adding to it. And correct me if I'm wrong, but this is what it reads. Added language and definitions for the inclusion of vaping and cannabis, smoke or smoking, the act of inhaling, exhaling, burning, vaping or carrying any lighted, heated or ignited cigar, cigarette, cigario, pipe, Hoka, water pipe, smoking device or any other device that delivers nicotine, tobacco and cannabis to a person. Is that saying that it's allowed or not allowed in the park?
In this particular section, it's just talking about the definition of what we mean when we state smoker smoking. So then the various chapters, how it's addressed, you would know what the definition, what it refers to.
Further in your presentation, does it talk about this item here? Whether it's allowed or not allowed?
It's included in, in the report and there is a slide, I believe, on that section, if I'm not mistaken.
Because I have significant concerns with this, if it's allowed in parks.
So Mayor, members of the council, I think the important thing to understand is the expansion of the definition. So in the event that we say that smoking is not allowed, that means all of those things under the definition of smoking would not be allowed. Does that help?
That helps significant, but let me just ask the question. Is any of this that's in red line allowed currently? Can you vape? Can you consume cannabis in our parks? We know you can smoke, but can you consume any of those items?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, you may.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm concerned with that. I'm concerned with it because there's areas of a park that should not have even cigarettes being smoked there, let alone vape. And there's a lot of issues with flavored vape and there's, not everybody is in tune with cannabis. And if somebody's smoking cannabis next to a playground, I have issues with that. So I'd like to have that conversation, if this is not the appropriate time. I understand what it is now, Ms. Rios was very clear on that. But if all of this is allowed in our parks, we need to take a look at that.
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, the laws around the use of marijuana prohibit marijuana use in, in places where it's public places and spaces. So you wouldn't be able to use marijuana in a park. The definition change in chapter 27 is so that the community better understands that in our parks, along with state law directly related to marijuana, we're also saying in our city code, you can't use marijuana in the park. So we're just duplicating and reaffirming what state law says. So currently, chapter 27 is silent to the use of marijuana because it's not part of the definition of smoking. We're adding it to the definition so that it does speak directly to the use of marijuana in the parks.
Yeah, okay. And, and the cannabis isn't the only thing I'm picking out here. There's just, there's issues with allowing those types of items in, in our park. But I think you've answered, I feel like you answered my question, so we can move on from it. Thank you.
Okay, chapter or section 2738 is in, under enforcement. The changes here expanded the ability for rural enforcement to, to also include city code enforcement inspectors and prime, police crime prevention specialists. Section 2739, entering park areas closed to public use. This section was added to, to enforce entering park areas that are closed to public use. 2745, vehicles, bicycles, skateboards, entering park areas closed to public. This section was revised to include language regarding motorized electric bicycles and scooters, as well as language preventing shopping carts in parks.
Hold on a second.
Would that include someone who was on a handicapped scooter? Motorized scooter?
Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor Clark, there is language in the, in the code that, that has exceptions for the proper use of, of a wheelchair. So that would be accepted.
Let me ask you a question. On this 2745 to include, would that also be electronic or electric skateboards or single tired boards?
Mayor, members of council, yes, it does. Moving on to section 2746, this, this section is over what's more commonly referred to as drones or unnamed aircraft vehicles and unnamed aircraft systems. This addition was made to reflect changes that occurred in, in the Arizona revised statutes. So it brings us in compliance with, with those state law. State law does require us to identify at least one park that's used for drones. And so we have identified, we do have a, a park that's identified. Thunderbird Paseo at 67th Avenue is our designated park for drone usage. Section 2747 covers prohibited weapons and exceptions in the discharge of firearms. Again, this was updated to address changes in, in the Arizona revised statutes and updated the language to meet those new requirements. 2749, under animals, control and abandonment, there was language added to include dogs within dog parks are accepted. Section 2751, swimming, boating, washing clothing and polluting waters. Again, this was a, a change we made to reflect that swimming, bathing and washing clothes in, in all sources of water would be prohibited. 2752 is prohibitive, prohibition of miscellaneous recreational activities. So here we just added some additional language to add camping as prohibited in activity in city parks. Section 25, chapter 25, section 2590 also restricts camping as well.
Hold on.
I have a, a question about, go back one slide. No, not boating, yeah. The, the, yeah. I thought we like couldn't enforce people from camping in our parks because we had to provide some other designated area. How do we address that issue?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we have an agreement with CAS and the Human Services Campus for bed space in downtown Phoenix. That allows us to more effectively enforce our camping ordinance because we have an option for them to stay at that Human Services Campus.
Moving on to section 2753, this, this item is under littering. Glass containers and fires prohibited. We added some language here on littering and to allow for small propane tanks at parks within a Ramada for cooking purposes only. Section 2757 covers the promotion, use and distribution of illegal drugs in a city park. So we added this section to combat the promotion of illegal drug activity in a city park. Section 2773, in revocation, we added language here that addresses the revocation of permits. And here in section 2781, I do want to point out, we had, there's a small administrative error in your, in the memo that was dated December 12th at this section. The item covered in the red line version and the clean copy of the code is correct. That small paragraph in the memo of 2781 contains some administrative errors. Some of the language that shows up as being crossed out was erroneously. So we would clean that up before we brought it back to this council. But I wanted to point out that the items in the code, both the clean copy and the red line version are correct. And this is just adding language that clarifies the definition of, of how we define a group under this section, group activities. And with that, be glad to answer any questions.
Any concerns, comments? Guess not. You need consensus or you good?
Our next steps is we would clean this up and bring it back to a, a future voting session.
Thank you. Ms. Bauer?
Council item of special interest, holiday lighting on east side of Murphy, Murphy Park.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this afternoon will be Jesse Peterson, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor and council, the purpose of this item is to provide information regarding the feasibility of adding holiday light elements to the east side of Murphy Park during the current 2023 Glendale Glitters season. So just for some background, the Glendale Glitters season kicked off this year on November 24th and the 2023 Glendale Glitters season continues through January 1st of 2024. Planning for the event begins each year with the lighting consultant and the Special Events Division in early spring. And due to the downtown campus reinvestment project, the Special Events Division began the transition of Glendale Glitters from Murphy Park to the Civic Center Plaza and surrounding downtown area for the 2023 season. With the installation of the DCRP construction fence, a portion of Murphy Park on the east side currently remains open. On November 28th, 2023, Councilmember Aldama requested a council item of special interest regarding the possibility to provide additional holiday lighting on the east side of Murphy Park during this current season. So due to the immediacy of this item, staff has already performed an evaluation of the infrastructure, operations and resources required to provide holiday lighting in the park during the 2023 Glendale Glitters season. I do want to thank all of the departments it took to do that very quickly. The evaluation considered the condition of electrical infrastructure and maintenance, the operational constraints due to the adjacency of the construction, the lighting contractor availability, as well as cost. So factors to consider as we went through that evaluation, the controls for the electrical infrastructure that are on the east side of Murphy Park are located behind the DCRP construction fence and would require staff to enter the construction site for operations and maintenance for lighting. That is a conversation we've had with our CMR Oakland Construction. Electrical components in Murphy Park are currently operational. We have determined that. However, we can also acknowledge that consistent vandalism to that infrastructure is an ongoing issue that has required frequent and immediate repairs by staff to keep just our pedestrian lighting operational in the park. We've had that consistently happen. We had it yet again yesterday and had to make sure that we sent staff out there to go make some repairs just to the basic lighting that's in the park at this point. The contracted holiday light provider would not be able to install lights wrapped around the trees as is customary. That type of installation takes a significant amount of time. The only type of light components that may be available would be a limited number of standalone features. The availability of the contractor to install the lighting is limited based on the holiday season right now. And we did get a cost estimate from them for those, for standalone features. To be able to disperse four standalone features throughout that area of the park would be about $30,000. We also want to acknowledge here that the Transportation Department did work with us very quickly to provide two directional message boards at Murphy Park to help direct traffic that's on Glendale Avenue to the Glitters display one block north. We did get feedback and I know several members of this council have shared with us some feedback as well that to be helpful to folks who are used to it being in the park, be able to see those large message boards. Those are out on site right now. So in conclusion, I do want to acknowledge that downtown has continued to experience a significant amount of foot track, foot traffic both on our weekdays and weekend evenings. We did just get those numbers in again, as we've mentioned in the past, we've been using Placer AI most recently as our service to help provide us attendance figures. And since the kickoff, we've averaged about 1.5 to 2,000 visitors per weeknight. So that would be Monday through Thursday. So on average, that's about 2,000 people a weeknight. And on our weekends, we're averaging over the course of a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, about 25,000 people. So we know since we kicked off, we've had over 80,000 people come to downtown. That's an 81% increase over last year and significantly higher, obviously, of the two years prior to that due to COVID. So with 20 days left of the Glendale Glitters season, due to the time, cost and resource constraints that, that I've shared, staff does recommend continuing to promote the Glendale Glitters lighting footprint that is currently in place while continuing to promote the location change to visitors. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Phil Aldama.
Thank you, Mayor.
First, I want to thank Jesse, you and your staff for quickly moving on this. Obviously, that was the expectation only because it's, it's going to be over here in January. For, just, just to mention, and then I can tell you where I am, $30,000 is a lot of money to do that. However, adding lights to the park increases foot traffic, which increases revenue and taxes that we receive. So I know that we don't have data that chases every dollar that comes in for, you know, for daily spending. But I can tell you that $30,000 comes in pretty quickly, especially during glitters. However, there's only, is it three, four weeks left?
Yeah, 20 days.
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I, I, so I'm a little torn there, but let me ask you this. You said there's a couple of things here, lighting is limited, the contractors install is limited, it's thirty thousand dollars, and the controls are on the, on the construction side. So are you telling us that we could do it, or because of those three items, it is not recommended whatsoever?
Mayor.
Sounds like if we gave consensus, you would do it even if it's behind the fence.
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, we are recommending not to do it, I'm being very clear about that. However, if consensus of the council was to move forward, our next step would have to be to go to the contractor first and foremost and determine now today what lighting elements they have available and what timeframe they have to be able to install. That would be the very first step that we would have to acknowledge if that's even an option. When we reached out to the contractor, that was a week ago when the item of interest came up right away, and at that time, they had a few features left and acknowledged that it would be about a week out for an installation at that time. That was before we were into December at this stage. Relative to getting behind the construction fence, that's certainly something we can do, we're not restricted from that. There's liabilities associated with it, but we were able to work through that with our contractor as needed.
Well, thank you for that. And by the time you get an answer back and delivered, we're probably another week and a half. So I'm, I'm not sure if this is something we run out and do. I'd love to see it done if the council gives consensus for it. But going forward though, that, that park will be like that for two more years, if not longer. I think we need to look at correcting the electrical issues in the park because we're going to run right into this next year. And just after January, we could have some lighting there that allows people to frequent the park more, that helps downtown businesses. So I don't, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm also feel like we need to do something now for the future. We need to do something in that part. And the electrical, if it's bad, we need to fix it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead. I think it was you.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I have received quite a few calls and comments from residents who have gone down to the Glendale Glitters, and they're, they were a little surprised that there were no lights in Murphy Park. And I know with the construction, and I've explained to them, we didn't know where construction's going to be, how it was going to work out, how the electrical would work. And so they were satisfied with the answer, but if there's a possibility of putting lights up in the future, I believe it's a little too late for this year, to be honest. By the time we got them up, we'd have to take them back down. So I think down the road, as we work with our contractor and the way the whole project is coming together, maybe try to plan some aspects of that being lit up for the next holiday season, even though the construction won't be finished. You know, if there's a way for us to kind of think ahead and to be able to plan that, I think that would be, I think that residents would like to see that again in Murphy Park. I did promise them that after construction, it was going to be a great, great pizzazz show for them. So we need to make sure that happens after construction. Thank you.
Joyce, hold on.
I would like, I wish we had perhaps noticed or had been brought to our attention that that, you know, was not being included this year, but would like to make sure that for next year and the year after, if the whole park's not open, that whatever part of the park is available could be decorated. It doesn't seem feasible for this year, given the time. And thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but we spend a thousand dollars a day on lots of stuff. But I'm not going to advocate that we do it now, given all the other unknowns involved. We could get down to ten days. And, but, do, is there nothing else that we can do in that area? Does the city not own any holiday decorations or anything like that that perhaps we've used in the past that we're not using this year? Merchants have suggested to me that perhaps the city does have some, some stuff that could be put in the park to enhance that experience that we've used in the past, that, you know, we're selfie and Instagram type opportunities and those sorts of things. Or can the, can staff brainstorm anything that could be done to improve that area, be it more attractive and not such a dark zone from Glendale Avenue and from fifty-eighth?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, we do own six individual would be considered maybe those selfie stations. In early August, staff presented to council what our Glendale Glitters plan was and showed a footprint that acknowledged where things would be laid out that excluded the park at that stage based on the construction schedule. And so those six items are placed throughout downtown. So there are several up in the Catlin Court area. There are two elves that are down in the Marty Robbins Alleyway off of Glendale Avenue. So we have placed those out near our merchants, and they've been very pleased with those placements because it has actually brought people where these were all congregated in the park before of those items that we do own as a city. They're certainly smaller than the large features you see that we rent, but those types of selfie stations, if you recall, there was a gingerbread man selfie station that is also placed out in the Catlin Court area. So we've spread those out throughout downtown because we acknowledged with the park being closed that we needed to bring people out to the periphery of the downtown with all of the lighting that we also included this year. So those stations are out there deployed already.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not in favor of lighting even the eastern part of Murphy Park at this point. I think drawing people closer and closer to a construction zone is not in our best People have varying degrees of control over their children, and putting children close to a construction zone doesn't seem like a very wise thing to do. I would rather see us, when construction is over, make a big deal about moving it back to Murphy Park and City Law and downtown, but I, I would prefer us not to, to use Murphy Park until construction is completed. I think it's a safety issue. Thank you.
I'm not hearing a consensus to change what we currently have right now. Any other comments?
If, if downtown merchants, for instance, were to come up with a low cost or no cost option for lighting, just like stringing just the lamp posts and the sidewalk edge trees, those that are just out there by the sidewalk and the lamp posts on that side of the street, is that something we could go ahead with?
I, I would, I would suggest that if, if there's a proposal like that, then the quickest, fastest way would be the council to give the city manager permission to make whatever call is necessary to ensure the safety, if it's possible. But if we try to wait for another council meeting, Christmas is over.
That's what I'm trying to do here, is to try to save.
Understand.
Make some progress. So I know the Catlin Court merchants have lit Catlin Court all of these years, and now this year, the city's doing it. So that kind of makes me think, well, there may be lots of string lights out there that are in storage at the moment that could be pulled out. And I know the merchants seem to be getting along quite well downtown now, and, and some, some helpfulness along those lines. I'm just trying to say, if we come up with either a very low cost or no cost option that can brighten up that side of the street and act like a pathway to, to where glitters is actually occurring more now than, you know, I would like us to leave that to the manager's discretion, but be something that we would like to see if it's possible.
So I guess my question for the council, is everybody good with the city manager making that decision if there's a proposal that works? We have a consensus for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Council item of special interest, Valley Metro's Ride Choice Program.
Mayor, members of the council here provide staff report is our Director of Transportation, Shahid Abbas.
Can you turn your mic on? Try it one more time. You, you can just go over there if you want to. Oh, there you go. Got to talk into it.
Mayor and the council, back in September, Councilmember Tomachov requested a council item of special interest for our regional ride share pilot program to offer another option and to provide more flexibility to regional paratransit riders with possible reduced cost to the city. Since then, the staff and the council member Tomachov have worked very closely to come upon a great, agreed scope of work. Before I get to the scope of work, I just want to highlight that at present, the city does offer an ADA service within the city to our ADA folks. And at the same time, the city also, and their service is on demand, they have to book one day in advance. And we also offer the same day service for disabled person, senior citizens, youth, and the general public, which they can book the service through microtransit through an app for the same, same day service. And that's also within the city of Glendale. The service outside the city of Glendale for ADA, we contract with Valley Metro for, for regional transit service. So those services are offered by Valley Metro to our ADA citizens. So this is the third type of a service which Valley Metro is offering, which they call a ride choice program. And this service can be open to both, either ADA or both ADA and the senior citizens. The scope is as shown on, on the slide. If the council agrees with the scope and directs the staff to move forward with the scope, then the staff is requesting a consensus for the council. And the staff anticipate about forty hours staff time to come up with the study and the And we'll work very closely with the metro, Valley Metro to gather all the data and come back and report the results and the findings to the council. That's all I have for today.
Question?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm confused, or I didn't hear or pay attention. What's the purpose of this?
This is a right choice program, Mayor and the council, this is a right choice program and option which Valley Metro is offering. It's just like an Uber service, somebody called directly to the transit, the service provider, and they can come there and pick them. And it can be open to the ADA persons only, or we can also participate for both ADA and other senior citizen can take advantage of that service. But that service, if somebody wants to go outside the city, city limits.
Joyce, why don't you let Warren go ahead and explain?
Okay.
Let me give it a go, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor Clark. So we have a paratransit, and initially, my idea was to pilot the paratransit transportation that we're required, we have regional paratransit program, and we're required to provide people rides wherever they want to go. If somebody wants to go to an Olive Garden in Mesa, and they qualify for a paratransit ride, we're required to take them there. So our paratransit costs, transit costs are very expensive, and they're, and we're using buses for, for paratransits. Other cities have been piloting these ride choice programs, and the average cost of a paratransit ride is about seventy-five dollars. There, it's expensive. But these ride choice options are saving about fifty percent on these types of rides that were federally mandated to, to provide. So it's been expanded a little bit to offer, also offer to senior citizens, and it's going to be, they're going to be able to choose whether they want to use the traditional transit that they've been using, which requires a reservation, or use ride choice, which will save us money and is also on demand, which is another advantage for the ride choice, is that it's on demand. So if you say somebody's using paratransit because they have a doctor's appointment or someplace they want to go, they have to make the reservation for tomorrow. But by using ride choice, not only does it save us money, but you can make the reservation now to go somewhere today. So this would just be a pilot to see how it works, how much money is it saving us? And at the end of the year, I think Shahid would provide us with some data to show us how this turned out and if we wanted to proceed with continuing on with it.
One, one follow-up question. Paratransit uses buses, would this ride choice program use regular vehicles? And is that where the cost saving comes in?
But I'll let the expert tell you.
Yeah, Mayor and the council, the right side, the right choice program is just like an Uber service. The Valley Metro has contracted with various service providers, so somebody can book a ride directly with the provider, and they can show up within a given time, the same day, you know, probably maybe same time an Uber takes. And then there's a service which, it's my understanding, there's an upfront cost which every service user provide, and rest of the cost is covered by the city. So at the end of the day, there's some cost which city has to cover for, for these services.
Does, does the ride choice vehicles allow for transport of, say, a wheelchair?
Mayor and the council, yes, they do allow for the wheelchair transport, but that will be a special service which will be an added cost for a wheelchair. That's all we are going to study as a part of this program.
Okay. When you do this pilot program and figure out what the costs are, will you be sharing what the additional cost would be to provide service to somebody who is wheelchair bound?
Mayor and the council, the idea is to come back with the as comprehensive number as possible, what is the additional cost to the city, and if they are saving, what are the saving, saving from the services? So we are going to go and study various cities, I think there are four cities in the valley that use their services of the various degree, take their example, working with the metro, and come back with a reasonable number about the cost and the savings.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
I, I wanted to ask you a question, you might be able to answer it, it may be you. I had, I understand this concept and I like it, other than I'd heard there are some locations where it's been abused and people are using it, basically getting rid of their cars and just using this for everything. Is that, is that potentially an issue for us? Where, where initially it saves us money, but it's so successful that it ends up costing us more money?
So Mayor and the council, the service is quite economical for a user person, as I think our understanding is, they pay only a very little portion of the upfront fee, rest, the city's covered. Other cities, our initial investigation show the cities have participated, their user ship for this service has increased over a period of time. How much we increase, we don't know, but that's what we are going to study, that how much service they have, where they started and where they are today. But I think talking our initial conversation with the Valley Metro staff, and they have seen an uptake in the service, you know, it's a very popular service, those who are using this service, you know, because it's open to the ADA person and it's, they're, they're open to the senior citizens. The city can choose to open it to the ADA and not open to the senior citizens, you know, or we can go both way.
Okay, so my follow-up question to that is, if, if we find that this is very successful and, and then it looks as though it's going to be abused, have we the ability to limit the amount of total money spent or, or the limit, so many rides per person or?
Or Mayor, if I could, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So my, the, the idea, the reason why I wanted to limit this initially just to the paratransit riders is because our para, and so I'm not proposing that we open this up to everybody who's using our transit, even if we, we say this is great, we're saving money, the most expensive transit we're providing is paratransit. That is, I mean, I think we're getting close to it being about two million dollars a year is what it's costing us for paratransit. I mean, it's unbelievably expensive to provide this service to, and the people need to use it, but if there's a way to save money on providing this service and maybe providing even better service because it's on demand, so I'm not proposing replacing all of our transit with this. I'm just saying that for those riders who we already are obligated to take outside of Glendale, and that's what this says, we're required to take them wherever they want to go, anywhere in the valley within a half mile of a transit stop is where we have to, where we have to, we're federally mandated to provide this ride. But in a, in an Uber, even an Uber, it's a slightly higher fee, but still less than seventy-five dollar ride to provide than rather than taking a bus all the way out to wherever somebody wants to, wants to take to see family, however, that's, this is their way of getting around the valley. So I'm not for a second proposing that we replace all of the transit we're offering with this, but I think, I think we're going to see, and I've known other cities have seen a real cost savings in offering this to certain types of transit users like our paratransit riders. And it was Shahid's idea to, to open it up to seniors as well that was added in because a lot of seniors don't have any. um, because a lot of seniors don't have any other way to get around, but only people who are, are traveling in this pilot outside of Glendale, they're not using our internal transit system, they're, they're going outside of our transit system.
I like your great idea, I'm, I'm.
Thank you.
Looks like you got a consensus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last item. Okay, city manager's report.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, I have two items for you this afternoon. Uh, following up on, um, on our Director of Transportation's report, uh, we just learned last week that the city of Glendale was awarded three grant applications from AmeriCopa Association of Governments, um, for a total of two hundred thousand dollars designed to optimize our signal lights on several corridors, including Camelback Road, Glendale Avenue and Bethany Home Road. And these will all provide much smoother flow of traffic, it'll help reduce obviously down effects like pollution, et cetera. I think of note is one thing under, uh, under Shahid's leadership is we're starting to develop the skill set internally. These were all staff applied for grants and, uh, so they were all successful in that. And again, so my compliments to the transportation staff, uh, for continuing to look for additional resources, uh, to build out our transportation system. The second item is also good news. Um, there is a national publication called, uh, Finance Buzz, and they do a study, uh, or a report, uh, called The Fastest Rising Cities in the U.S. And what they do is they look at cities of more than two hundred thousand in population, of which there are a hundred and seventeen currently in the United States. And what they do is they kind of put you into a category of, you, either, either you're rising or you're declining. Um, and, but what's interesting is they have a number of, of kind of, uh, factors which they use to analyze to come up with this. So it's not a real simple, uh, kind of abstract reason, way to measure this. They, they have very significant, uh, data that they use. So they, they look at things like population change, they look at your unemployment rate, which is obviously speaks to the health of the community. Uh, they look at per capita increase in income, again, another strong indicator of financial strength. They look at new home construction, uh, they look at the number of new businesses that have opened relative to the population. So are you becoming a job center or not? Uh, they look at home value increase in the community. They look at the, this is an interesting one, they look at the percentage of residents with debt collections. Again, making sure that it's just not a few percentage of your population that's doing financially well, while maybe many other parts of your city are struggling. So they take that into consideration. And when they put all that together, uh, what they determined was that the city of Glendale was the fifth fastest rising city in the United States for the, the prior year. Um, one particular, uh, data point, there was a lot of them that was called out, but we saw the largest increase in home values in the country between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-two, with an overall valuation increase, according at least to their research, that our home values have risen eighty-two percent faster than our peer cities. So when they look at all this data, they're not looking at every city, only the cities that are two hundred thousand or more, so you really get a good understanding of, of this, of kind of the, the universe that we're looking at. And, uh, again, we did it incredibly well. This is, I think, in large part because of the vision this council has set out, focusing on things like infrastructure investments, job creation, um, you know, economic development. I think all those help reflect in our, uh, in our ranking. So, uh, good news to end, uh, two thousand and twenty-three on, and my congratulations to the mayor and council, you should be very, I think, very pleased with this particular, uh, report. And that does conclude my information.
Thank you. City attorney?
Mayor, council, no report, however, the matter that was noticed for an executive session has been resolved and we do not need to have an executive session. Thank you.
You just made a lot of people happy.
Thank you.
Okay, council items of special interest, uh, uh, we would do Councilmember Aldama, he had to step out, he had, uh, urgent issue, but we'll start with Councilmember Hugh. Thank you, Councilmember Mellner.
Nothing today.
Councilmember Tomachov.
Nothing today.
Councilmember Turner.
Not today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Nothing today.
Well, good, 'cause I got a bunch of stuff. So, uh, I actually thought our city manager would have spoke on this, but he didn't. So I'll read this to everybody, uh, along with the two items of good news that you brought up. I got a letter, um, I guess it was yesterday, uh, and it's from the Government Finance Officers' Association. It's, uh, it reads, "Dear Jerry, we're pleased to notify you that your annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty-two qualifies for GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. When a certificate of achievement is awarded to a government and award a financial reporting achievement, uh, AFRA is also presented to the individual or department designated by the government as primary response, primarily responsible for having earned the certificate." Toward has been sent to the submitter as a desig, designated on the, as designated on the application. We hope that you will, uh, arrange for formal presentation. I guess that's what I'm doing right now, the certificate and the award of the financial reporting achievement, give you appropriate publicity for this notable achievement. Um, anyway, um, I can only guess that that is you. Your team, how's that?
My team in particular, Levi, Mr. Gibson.
Okay, so, uh, very proud of you folks for all this good news coming in and, uh, it like it only gets better. Uh, with that, I do want to thank everyone, uh, that, uh, had a hand in, in making our tenth annual Hometown Christmas Parade a success. I think it was a phenomenal success from the parade committee, to the students of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, our volunteers made the event, uh, again, a tremendous success. Uh, with that said, I'm not gonna name names because there's just too many and I surely will miss someone. Uh, we can't have, uh, that because everyone that was involved was so vital to, to the success, but I will say that through all the hard work, our volunteers, the goodwill generated on Saturday, uh, will linger, um, here, uh, we wrote sometime, but actually it's gonna linger forever. Uh, what I really want people to understand is, uh, last year, because of the Christmas Parade, we were able to present Hope for Hunger Food Bank, a food bank started by Glendale firefighters ten years ago, eleven years ago, a check for thirty thousand dollars. And the year before, we did the same thing, along with tons of food. This year, uh, we will be presenting a check, I wish I could get a drum roll, uh, for one hundred thousand dollars to our local food bank, which is phenomenal. It's absolutely phenomenal. The city of Glendale, its employees, our businesses, our staff, the churches, everybody has just really pulled together and are making this incredible. So there are gonna be a lot of people this year that are hurting, uh, there can be a lot of people that will be helped, uh, because of the generosity of a lot of people, because of the Christmas Parade, because of all the volunteers. So again, I can't thank all of you enough for that. With that said, um, uh, I'm gonna keep on going here, 'cause I'm on a roll. Uh, best community spirit, Glendale Elementary School won that. Most entertaining, uh, was, uh, the, I cannot pronounce this, I wish Jamie was here, 'cause he could. Uh, it's a car club, uh, Be, Be Nekira, I think is how it's pronounced, classic car club. Best overall appearance, uh, Olin Ilutzi Dance Academy. Uh, first in the band competition, uh, goes right to our local folks, Glendale High School won first place. Independence High School won second place and Ironwood High won third. Uh, Alpha Nation Toy Giveaway, if you're not familiar with this, on Sunday, we have, uh, Alpha Nation, uh, will be, uh, using the facilities right here. Uh, they plan on giving away, my understanding, uh, Mr. Hugh's been a big part of this, uh, four semi-loads of toys.
Yeah, we're talking about.
Only about seventeen thousand toys that will be given away in the city of Glendale, right here. Uh, you know what? Um, th, this has been an incredible year, uh, a lot of people are coming forward. The toys will be free to children, uh, from the ages of newborn up to twelve years old. Uh, if that's not enough for you, I would ask everybody, if you're able, if you're capable, please, please, January tenth, figure out a way to, to, uh, show up at United Methodist Church, Glendale Fellowship Hall. Uh, they're located at seventy-one oh two North Fifty-Eighth Drive, um, right here in Glendale, it's open to the public. This will be the fifth annual, uh, blood drive that I've been putting on. Uh, this is the time of year when people, uh, uh, have issues, they need blood, it's also one of the hardest times to get people to donate. It doesn't cost anything to donate, and I can tell you folks, uh, it saves lives. It's the one thing you can do, you're guaranteed you can save someone's life. If you're able, please come out and help us with that blood drive. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Uh, city manager, anything else from you? With that, can I get, uh, we, we don't have an executive meeting, can I get a motion?
Mayor, before you close the meeting out.
Go ahead.
I'm confused, was there a council item of interest in there somewhere?
I, I think the council should be interested in all that, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, but.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
We do have an agenda that we're supposed to keep to under the open meeting laws and you chewed me out a week ago or, no, a month ago about this and.
Yeah.
And now you're doing the very same thing, just like you always have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Turner, I appreciate your input.
No, you don't.
You're right, I don't.
I know you don't. It's a quick line to the public.
Okay, sir, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
I move with adjourn.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, we adjourn, thank you.